We're live. Hi, everybody. Welcome to another edition of the Get Growing Weekly Work Session with Get Oiling. I'm Coach Ashley, joined today by Jessica and Colin. Hi, guys.
Everyone.
Can we Brady Bunch? There we go. And Amanda's here as well, and I think Greg is also on the way. Hi. How's it going?
Still on a call yet, so he might. I don't know if he messaged yet.
Okay, all good, all good. Everybody coming in? Hello, it's good to see you. We're excited that you are here. If you tuned in last week, you know that we are on a blogging rip lately. So last week, we talked about why a blog is important for you to use, why it's a great skill set for you to build using one, and how it can get you a huge warm market over the big picture, long term for you residually, just like the income you want to build with Young Living, you can get residual leads with blogging. But then, big question, obvious question, how do you do it? Like, how do you actually blog? We did talk a little bit last week about the stuff that you write, but I mean, how many of you guys like for things to be pretty? Right? You want things to look nice. You want them to be branded well. I know some of us are just like, I just want to get to the point, and that's fine, but it is helpful to have things formatted nicely, people and interact with it better. And here's the cool thing, guys, you don't have to be a designer, you don't have to be a pro at using our system to do what we're going to show you how to do today, and you're going to see some examples as well. Basically, like what this looked like and what your blog may have looked like before, and what it can look like if you use some of these tips and tricks that we're going to show today. If you're brand new, welcome. We do this every week, totally free for everyone who is growing a business with Young Living. We have a complete software solution to help you get yourself out there, manage your business, grow, and then some. We've got everything that you need, but the VO, all under one roof. We're at GetOiling.com, and you can start today for a dollar. If you're here and you've been here for a while, we love you very much, and you're going to learn how to blog on your site today. So I'm going to go ahead and go over to our slides and teach through this. We'll say hello to Greg when he comes back. Panel, if we could go ahead and shut off our videos, we will get this show on the road and all hang out once everything is all said and done. All right, if I can now find my presentation. All right, fabulous. So if you could just pop on with somebody, just let me know you can see my screen here.
Yep, we can see it good.
Thanks, guys. All right, so today, we're going to talk about how to create a beautiful blog on your Get Oiling site. If you came here today needing help, or you have questions about things that are not blog or blog or anything else, go ahead and add those to the Q and A, and we will get to them after the training today. So in today's training, we're going to cover how to brand your Get Oiling blog, super easy shortcuts for great design on your blog. Did you know that you can design your blog? And you don't have to be a pro. We'll show you how to do it. And how many of you guys would really love an easier way to share recipes on blog posts? How many, maybe a quick show of hands? Wouldn't that be great if you could just click like maybe two or three times, and voila, it's figured out for you. You just put your recipe information in. Got a way to do that. I'm going to show you that here in just a second. And then we're going to get into live Q and A and website reviews at the close of this training. All right, so if you are watching this as a replay, or you're here today and you somehow made it to this live call without being on the list, make sure you get on the list so you get our updates, our replays. We send out slides and checklists and all kinds of helpful things to help you grow, as well as exclusive goodies and bonuses and discounts and things like that. Get on the list at GetOiling.com/weeklyworksession. Now, how many, just a quick show of hands, how many of you guys who are here right now have written your first blog post on your Get Oiling website? Ooh, lots of bloggers here. Oh, my God, you guys, I'm going to cry. I'm so proud of you. This is awesome. All right, so I want to talk about branding your blog. First, maybe just really quickly, what branding means is to show up the same way everywhere, right? So showing up the same way everywhere. This is really not that different from like the literal branding, like when you brand cattle, right? You, there's a stamp, it's the same stamp, it's on all of them, right? You're putting your same stamp everywhere you go. And so that can be the things you say, that could be the photos you use, the colors you use, the fonts you use, the images you use, right? And the nature of the message that you're showing up and providing. So I want to show you some of these ways that you can brand your blog so that you have that consistency, so that people start to know and recognize what it is that you're doing, that they can find relevant and interesting, so that they can take those next steps and get started with you. All right, so to brand your blog, over here on the left-hand side menu, when you are logged into your Get Oiling account, if you move your eyes down the left-hand side of your screen, or if you're on a mobile or iPad-type device, there's an expandable menu up at the top. You're going to want to look for the blog post menu and hit the manage link. And that's going to bring you over to a page where there is a header, you want to give it a name. So if, in the case of Jane, hers is the Happy Holistic Blog, because she is holistic mama. All right, so the Happy Holistic Blog is the name of the blog. This is going to show up everywhere that you have a blog post, the name of the blog. And then we're going to get into some personalization options. So you click that personalization link, and here's some options. First, make yourself a blog logo, all right? I made a little circle one, just so that this is something that could show up with any resolution. If you try to put image, if you try to put text on images that are like horizontal, they can, you know, sort of change and not necessarily be as optimized with mobile when we're on a blog page. So I like to just use a simple little thing. Canva now has curved text, y'all. So you can actually create a little round logo like this, really easy. I did everything that you see here today that is image-based, literally this morning on Canva. So it's really quite easy to do. All right, so brand it with a logo. This is going to show up all over the blog, and you'll see what this looks like when we're done with the slides. Further down the page, add a footer to your blog posts. So this is actually going to show up on the blog page. Now, this is sort of a message that Jane has on the front page of her website. "I help driven, soul-centered people like you regain confidence, energy, and live a vibrant life. Get my guide and join the community." So this leads off to a landing page where she offers a free guide as well as access to her lead group. Okay, this is going to be down at the very, 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 very bottom of the page, so people make it all the way there. Surely, they're interested in where else they can go. So this is something that you can add to brand the opportunities that you offer on the bottom there. All right, you can also build your following with a post footer. Now, this, these two things that I just showed you, this is on the blog page itself, meaning your GetOilingURL.com/blog. This shows up, this shows up, right? Now, on the post itself, you will also see this at the foot, right? So this is a great place to put social links and calls to action for people to engage with you otherwise. I would not necessarily, unless you just really only want to use one funnel ever, I wouldn't necessarily put a funnel link here, because you may find in your marketing strategy that using different funnels or offers for different content is the way that you want to go. So what I like to do in the footer section to personalize this is to put a subscribe. So this would be a landing page that would say subscribe for blog updates, and then you would just set the landing page up to tag people for blog. And then every time that you create a new blog post, you can search that tagged list for blog and send your blog posts out to that group. All right, now sidebar, this is along the right-hand side of your blog. You can have a little blurb of text. Remember, guys, I'm going to show you exactly what all of this stuff is and what it looks like on a site here in just a bit. But this is extra sidebar content. You can put a little welcome note here, you could put about you here. You can include a little image here, totally up to you. You can also connect a funnel here like I've done for Jane. All right, now, did you guys know, this is so, so, so exciting, did you guys know that you can use saved replies for blog posts? How many of you guys knew that? How many of you guys are floored that there's actually a template that's on your Get Oiling site that you could use to make your blogs prettier right now? Isn't that cool? All right, so there are newsletter templates in here. There are also recipe templates in here. And of course, with saved replies, you can create your own, right? You can copy it to something new, one that already exists, add your own images to it. If you want to have the same images or the same text there every time, you name it, you can make your own stuff and save replies as well. So here's what it looks like. When you go to write a blog post, so if you notice over here in the left-hand corner, under blog posts, we clicked write. That opens up this page. Now, on this new post, you can hit saved replies here and pull down a dropdown menu. Now, you can use multiples of these on the same blog post. So here's an example. I believe this is newsletter two as a template. So you just pick a template, and then you click and replace the images and texts. How many of you are having sort of a brain explosion right now at how easy this is, right? And literally, you guys, the reason why I love this so much is that if you click literally this image, so click me to replace like this one up top, and you take an image that you want to put there, it will automatically make it fit that space. You don't have to fool around with code or trying to like reconfigure the dimensions of a photo. I don't really, I mean, I don't know, know how to do that. I can, I can cry to our support team and beg for help, just like a lot of you guys do, I'm sure. But to have something like this that I could just click and swap, y'all, super easy. So here's what it can look like. Haha, it's pretty cool. I made that in Canva today, you guys. Really, really, really easy to do. You can use a blog header template, literally in Canva, they have a blog header. You add the photo, you add the elements, you use your brand text, and voila, there it is, right? Including this cute little one that you see over here on the right, which again, I'll show you in a minute. So this is what it can look like on your blog post when you're creating this. All right, now, what if you want to add a recipe? We're just going to add another saved reply template, you guys. So what you're going to do is you're going to go back to that saved reply template after you have written your blog post or wherever you want this in your blog post. And I'm using recipe template one, which looks like this. And just the same, you swap out the image, swap out the text and the instructions, and you now have your own recipe on your blog post. Isn't that pretty? How many of you guys are going to start adding more blog posts with recipes on them? Really cool, right? All right, so by the way, this is really important. If you're going to use these design and personalization features on your blog, there's one really important thing that you need to do, okay? You should absolutely be uploading a featured image. Now, the featured image is something that's going to show up when you save your blog, when you share your blog post on social media. It's going to show up as well if you use that exciting new feature that Greg shared with us last week, where you can actually populate existing blog posts. So here's, you know, here's the most recent stuff from the blog, and you have that on your homepage, right? You need to have featured images uploaded for that to work, right? So make sure that you are uploading a featured image, and by the way, again, you can brand your featured images. Again, made this in Canva, they have a blog post template. It's already sized, it'll always be consistent. Drop it, drop an image in there, brand it with your stuff, and use that, so they're all consistent. But what you want to do is, is when you scroll down on this page where you have written your blog, you're going to look for this thing that says advanced options. And here's where the options are. I want you to make sure that show featured image on the post is not selected. Because if it is selected, it's going to automatically insert that image into the post. And if you want to use that cool formatting from the saved reply templates, it's not going to quite look right for you. You're not going to like how it looks. So you will be able to maximize the benefit of having a featured image while being able to have that great design that we want, right? It'll look better that way. All right, so who wants to see the difference between these two things live? Excellent, so I'm going to swap a share out here. We're going to show you this stuff, then we're going to get into some Q and A and site reviews. And by the way, you guys, if you want a review of your work live on one of our calls, make sure you go to GetOiling.com/websitereview. All right, I'm going to stop my share here and then go over and show you guys the difference between these two blog posts. If you give me just a second. Okay, I think I got it. Okay, so this is what a blog post will probably look like for you. And by the way, here's that branded image, right? Mentioned that to you guys before. And when you go to her actual blog page itself, you'll see the Happy Holistic Blog, and you'll see her recent posts, okay? But on this original post, so this is, this is what it used to look like. If you just use the featured image in the post itself, when you don't uncheck that box, this is where it shows up. And then, of course, you have all of this here, and this is perfectly fine. If this is what your blogs look like, this is perfectly fine, right? Totally okay. This is where the additional stuff goes. Love this info. Sorry, love what you read here, subscribe for updates, the social. If you guys remember, this was the post footer. And then the blog footer is right down here, just to remind you guys of where everything's at. Now, let's look at what this looks like when we use a template. Same content, but this is the actual format of it. It reads a little better, right? It flows a little better, and then there is that pretty, pretty recipe. Pretty cool, right? And remember, if you use the hashtag contact on a link, it'll pop up your contact box from anywhere on the site. And then, of course, you've got your comments and all that other good stuff. So that is the difference between the two. Would also love to have Colin come out here for a minute and show you guys. Colin and his wife have an awesome blog that they're running on Get Oiling, and they've got a lot of content there. I'd be really excited for Colin, if you could share any insights that you have about how you guys maybe come up with content, what you do for design, and maybe show us some of what you got. That'd be really cool.
Yeah, totally. I mean, after watching all of it, you just presented there, part of me is like, I'm, I need to up my game as far as the design, that some of the template that you just showed. I literally had no idea about the save reply using that for blogs. So I'm learning things along with everybody here. This is crazy.
Yeah, I was yesterday years old when I learned that.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah.
It was honestly, that was like, oh, jeez, how did I never think of that before?
I know. It turns out Greg already did. Go figure.
Yeah, go figure. Greg knew something that we didn't. Weird. So, yeah, I would love to share some of the stuff that I've done here. So what I'll do is I will share my screen. And can everybody see that? Okay?
Yes.
Okay, beautiful. So the way that Tanya and I run our blog is kind of evolved and expanded over the years. What started off as a pretty much Young Living exclusive blog has obviously evolved as I've learned marketing from you, Ashley. Thank you. Also from, from some of the content from Martha's. So we've transitioned some of our content from being, like I said, Young Living exclusive into some of the programs that we offer, our Bat Signal, if we're all familiar with that term. We've, like I said, we've just transitioned out of that. So you're going to see a bit of a mishmash of the content that I offer in our blogs. As far as the design goes, well, the articles that I'm going to show you right now, these have been quickly written by Tanya for, for one of her programs. They are not designed as, as well as that, as that save reply that you just shared. So that is something that I would definitely like to return to and look at. But the content itself, Tanya and I have a bit of a different approach, and both are completely valid. Tanya has a bit of a background in creative writing, so she writes from her heart first, and she writes how she would speak to you as a person. And that sort of thing really comes through in her blogs. It then is received a lot more favorably in her communities and in her, in her groups. I approach blogging a little more from the angle of doing a lot of research into user intent as far as what they search online, and I try to mirror those answers in my blogs. So that content is written a little bit differently. Both are completely valid. Both work exceptionally well. I think in the end, the, the, the ever, what's the adage there that Gary Vaynerchuk says, content is king, right? Just keep writing good content for people, and that's all that really, really matters. So I have used the footer for our blogs. As you see, we have each one of our programs input into the, into that. I am still using the featured images on some of these things. I am going to take a note out of your template and remove the featured image and replace it with the header that you have shown. So that's currently how our blogs look. We link off to affiliate links as you should be. We link off to our programs as you should be. I am using the sidebar, pardon me, I'm using the sidebar section as a way to further people down our funnel about one of our programs here, looking at it. It's been a while since I've reviewed this blog, to be honest. Get Oiling has kept me quite busy. But looking at this, I think I'd like to update this a little bit more. So that's how Tanya approaches things. How I approach things, forgive me if I'm meandering. I just have lots of things that I could discuss on this, is I like to use the, what is this section called again? For some reason, I'm brain. The excerpt feature. Thank you, Greg. I like to use the excerpt feature, which summarizes what your blog says when you're looking at it from, from, from this, from this view. And then the other thing that I do is I add a little button. You can obviously hit the read more button to, to open up into the blog, but the little button seems to also attract interest. And then when you click into the blog, whenever the internet decides to work, you'll see that I have things laid out a little bit differently. I like to do things like bolding top parts of my blog in an effort to try and get the snippet. If anybody is interested in that kind of stuff, please email me. I have lots to say on that. And then I place headers along the way based on certain topics, linking off accordingly. All of this stuff that you're seeing in my blogs has been researched quite heavily. So my efforts are to try and outblog other people in this area, if you will. So again, a little bit of a different, mine's more technical, Tanya's is a little more by the heart. But that's how we approach creating content for our blogs.
I love that, Colin. These are really great insights. And honestly, I think between the two of you, you are a powerhouse. I mean, where you're writing from the heart, that's killer copywriting. But you really get a lot right in terms of the, sort of the philosophy behind this, in terms of where the eye goes and, and how you want people to react, especially with the way that you're formatting. So really cool. Thank you so much for sharing that. And since everybody, well, not everybody, but definitely some of you guys, I saw some questions come through. Like, can you show me how to maybe change an existing blog post over to one that I just showed you? And I'm not asking you, like, maybe just a quick show of hands from you guys who are here right now. Would you like to see an existing blog post set up in the sort of original kind of way changed over to the new one? Ooh, look at those hands. Okay, we're going to do this. I'll show you exactly what I did. All righty, here we go. All right, so this is the original blog post. And, and remember, you guys, before you come to the blog, please, 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 write your copy somewhere else. Do not try to come up with what you're going to say while figuring out the technical side of stuff at the same time. Rule number one, do the writing first, and then bring it over here, okay? That's the most important rule, period, for anything you do here. Have what you know you want to say figured out, what you want to show figured out. Then you come here and you make it pretty, okay? All right, now that we've got that out of the way, this is the original post. So what you do, and you could do this above or below, because you can just delete whatever you want. I'm going to put my cursor right at the very, very beginning, right here. And I'm going to go to saved replies, and I'm pretty sure I used blank newsletter template two. I sure did. Okay, so that's it right there. I am going to replace this. Now, I already have an image that I've used, and it's a long one, and it is this one right here, long, thin one. Okay, and, and to be fair, you guys, if you are already creating images for, say, your member area, like a member area header, there are specific dimensions in your member area setup that give advice on that. The dimensions of this specific image that I just used are the exact same ones. This is the same background that is used in Jane's member area background photo. Just, you know, a quick hack for you, if you want a multipurpose a background. You can use the same one you use for your member area and your vaults as you do for your blog. Just obviously change your, you know, the font that goes over it. Okay, so that one's there. I'm going to go ahead and replace the image with my blog image that I created in Canva. There we go. It's got the blog title on it. It's got the name of the blog and the person who wrote it, along with the website. All right, so now I've got the images in place. I am going to replace or delete the button, because I don't need the button. I am also not going to keep the second headline. So I am going to delete this stuff, because I know I'm going to put a recipe in here. All right, delete. Delete and delete. Perfect. Okay. I'm going to enter down a little bit. This is all the text that I started with. So I'm going to grab this text right here from the beginning of my blog post. I'm going to come right up here. I'm going to select this. Now, remember, these two look different, right? This is, you know, a little heavier, this is a little lighter. This is actually in keeping with the brand, specifically the, the text settings that I have set up in the custom fonts and everything in, in the, what is it, site settings down here. So I want to keep this, but I'm going to be pasting this text. So don't just go and paste this directly. So I want, what I want you to do is select it, hit this little more text guy right here, paste plain text. And when you do this, it's going to, you paste that in there, and then you hit paste into document. It's going to show up right here, just like the rest of it, okay? Now, I am actually, because I don't need another header here, I'm getting rid of that. Okay, so that's already done. Now, I'm going to delete this down here as I go. So that was the first paragraph. Now I need to get into this one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, all right? Here is the quick and dirty way to do this. I'm going to, I'm going to grab all of this, this stuff right here, one through seven. I'm going to copy it. I'm going to do the same thing right here. And then we're going to go back and make a couple of specific edits. So paste plain text and drop it in there. Okay, now, here's how you get it to look like this. Do you see how these are different? And actually, I totally did not put that there correctly. But all of these are the same, the, they are set up as, as sort of headings in the, in the text. So what we're going to do is grab this guy right here, and we're going to go to paragraph. And then I think I used heading three. Whoa, that's not what I wanted to do. All right, so I'm going to hit enter and maybe see if I can do that differently. Greg, I might need your help. Hang on. Let me try.
Enter's probably the fix there, yeah.
Okay, cool.
Thinking it's all part of the same sentence somehow.
Yeah, so when in doubt, make an extra enter, and it should work fine. There we go. And you could always delete the enter. Oops, no, maybe not, after you do that. Okay, actually, I'm going to delete from there.
Space there after the header too.
Got it. Okay, yeah, I see. Okay, perfect. So you can play around with that. Add an extra enter or two in there. You could always delete it. So again, I'm grabbing that header. I'm going over here under paragraph, and instead of calling it normal paragraph format, I'm calling it heading number three. And if that happens to you, again, put an enter before it as well. Actually, I think that's the issue on this, an enter before. Yep, that's it. Okay, and so that's, that's it. So I would do that for all of them, right? And then I would go ahead and delete the stuff that's down here, so, because I know that I've already got that translated. Okay, and then I want to go ahead and add that recipe, right? So I'm going to go to saved replies, recipe template one, swap out the image. There it is. And then you just put your recipe in here, and you're good to go. You save it. And it's not going to be complete, of course, when I save it and show it to you, but you guys get the picture. Make sure that you do go to advanced and remove, show the featured image on the post. Highly recommend using the excerpt like, like Colin talked about. We'll have to get into more of those technical tips and tricks on another training. This one is really more about making it pretty. But so here is, here's what it looked like. Here's what it looks like now, right? Pretty cool. Pretty, pretty, pretty cool. All right, so let's, let's go ahead and get into, we've got some site reviews, and then we're going to get into some Q and A. How many of you guys are so excited about blogging now that it looks so much easier? You can go pretify all your blog posts and make them look nice and clean. I'm excited to see them, and that is definitely something. If you guys sign up for our website review, we can look at your blogs at that point as well. But I'm going to go ahead and make sure that I've got everybody queued up for today. We've got two to do. Actually, yeah, okay, cool. So I've got Jolene and Amelia. Who would like to go first? Oh, we got both of you raising your hands, I think. Nope, not either of you. All right, Amelia, are you here? All right, I am going to bring you onto chat. I think you should be able to now. Hey, ladies.
Let me fix it up a little bit. There we go.
It's so good to see you. What is up with the hats today, y'all? Hi. All right, all right. What are we talking about? Y'all, y'all are, okay, just, just so you guys know, when everyone else who's here, Amelia was one of the very first people to come out and sort of work together on a weekly work session on a site, getting this stuff together. And she's just, she's brought her daughter on board to work with her, and I'm just really, really excited to see what you guys have been working on. So, so yeah, tell me, what is the, because I don't What is the, because I don't have the website link here in front of me. What, what, what should I be looking for in your account, I guess, then, just for for your website? Or do you have a URL for it?
Yeah, so we actually updated her URL to justaskamelia.com and it's Amelia with an E.
What a great name. Alright, I'm going to pull that up and then we are going to, what? You built this on our platform? Hang on. Okay, this looks so good. Okay, you guys. Wow. Alright, discover your second life, right? Alright, one thing that I would recommend is that you make this maybe a little bigger and bolder. It's just a little bit hard to see.
Okay.
Another thing that you could do here. Yeah, another thing that you could do in this image is to wherever you got it from is to maybe reduce the transparency or put a little bit of a filter over it so that. Or actually, if you put a slightly darker filter on it, the white text is going to pop out. Another option would be to lighten it and use a darker text.
Okay.
Oh, this is good.
And then I just borrowed that section for now so we can kind of get the ball rolling.
Okay. Oh, awesome. So you guys, this is that parallax feature that Greg showed just a little while back where where you can scroll and the image stays there. Oh, that's so cool. Awesome. We got a nice picture of you here, Amelia. Get in touch. That's that contact. Awesome. Okay. So using Colin's trick of putting a button in here, I think is a really good idea.
He had some fun on blog there.
Trying to make sure I don't have an issue in my ears here. I feel like we're breaking up a little bit. Okay, so I would, I would put a button in here if you're going to use the excerpts, maybe have just a little bit more text in your excerpts. Because you want to give them a reason to to click. Everything that you're doing on your website is is giving someone a reason to take an. Excellent. Okay. And then let's go, go back to your front page upcoming events. I know that's something that you love to do. Making spirits bright. You doing a wine party? Are you, I know you were doing a wine party when we talked once before.
Not for this one. Yes, we actually got a dad on a track well, so.
Awesome, awesome. Highly recommend you use an image for this as well. And there is a place in your, in your event settings to put an image in. And that's something I'm pretty sure if you use. If you use like the same blog post template like in Canva, for instance, you should be able to have a nice, nice, good sized photo over here. Unless, I don't know, Greg, is it, is it a horizontal orientation for the images?
I think it'll work, you know, with almost anything. It'll fit it in there pretty well, but square is a good option for here. It does put it to the left. And then in that pop up that appeared when you click register, it fits in that box. So you can do square to slightly portrait, I suppose.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Pretty well.
Yeah, it would also go right here. And that'll also allow for easier social sharing as well. So whatever image you would make to maybe put it on Facebook, just pop it right here. And that'll make it show up right here too. Alright, and join my community. I want to know about this. This is, look at you. This is actually you. I love this. Okay, so I would add just a little bit more here as well in terms of like, you know, here's what you'll get when you unlock this secret. We have like, I think we have like a 30 second lag or something like this. I'm glad you find that funny. Awesome. Yeah, so what I would do here is, is again, just kind of maybe give three or four bullet points of like, you know, unlock my secret today and get this and this and this and this, you know, so you can feel fancy over 52, right? That's what we're looking for. I'm really happy for you guys. This is excellent. You know, another kind of next level thing that you could do here is to, is to consider putting text over the images here as well. Just to kind of make them more like buttons and then use them like, you know, here's the same URL you would use for the button is to put them over the top.
I just had had knee surgery.
Oh. Like you on this page had just had knee surgery? Right here?
Okay.
This, the lag is is kind of getting in my ears and I'm having.
Yeah, the dancing, well, that was me recovering from it. And that's when I was finally able to start moving my leg. But and that's what got me into Young Living.
Oh, okay. That's amazing. Well, great. So I'm really excited to see what you guys are doing here. And I think you're totally on the right track. Just, you know, I would just play around a little bit more with with images and with like the font here. You know, just to make sure that this is a little more bold and stands out. And then anywhere you want somebody to start here, do a next thing, just make sure you're letting them know what's going to be in it for them, right? So little secret to living your best life, immediately gain access to my unlock the seeking. Okay, here we go. Unlock the secret to aging gracefully class. Using this unlock the secret to aging gracefully, like get my class for free. That's something that you may want to actually put on this page itself. Because that is going to be something that's immediately enticing that people can see that they can decide that they want right now. Like, oh, I want, I want that for free. Okay, how do I get that? I'm so excited to see you guys and this looks amazing. Yeah, so keep, keep up the good work, guys. Did you have any more questions?
Yes, thank you. I'm so glad she's working with me. No, not now.
Okay, well, y'all coming back when you do. Alright, thanks, guys. Alright, excellent work there, you guys. That's really beautiful. Gotta love that mother daughter team. Okay, Jolene, are you here? Alright, Jolene, would you please come out? Let's talk about your site. How are you?
I'm good. Thanks. Can you hear me?
I can. Hi. Alright, I do have a URL for your site and I'm going to go ahead and put that in. That's your name, which is great. That's an excellent choice for branding yourself. Alright, tell me a little bit about what you would like to know. What kind of advice are you looking for?
Um, I guess I'd just like to know what you think of it and. You know, like what are, what do you, when you look at it, what do you think? So I've got a clientele for massage therapy. So I guess my thought is thinking about people who don't know that I do Young Living. What, how does it look to them? I'm trying to create like a, been doing this for so, so long and I never had like a hub or like a classroom like to hold all of the information. And I love the vaults for that. And so all of my contacts from over the years that I never had that place to. Just create like that, like a library of things. So that's what I, that was kind of my goal for this to begin with is to just have that space for them. And so I've created that in the vault. I created a couple vaults, but mainly for my current members or my clients that have been with me forever and using YL. But I guess now moving forward into like the whole branding and things, just me outside of YL. I'm trying to start incorporating that too. But also, I, I don't think that I just, I love it. I absolutely love this. I and I've written in so many times about how amazing the customer services. But I just don't feel like it's, doesn't really grab me like some people's does. So I'm just wondering what your thoughts are and how I can change it.
Okay, well, the one thing that stands out is that you said that what you would like is to kind of have a place where everybody can find all of this stuff that you know. So the place that people land needs to offer that, right? So one of the things that you would be talking about on the other side of the door is certainly, you know, stuff in your products. But it sounds like you've got a whole list of people from your massage career and from people who, you know, are adjacent to that. This is obviously a lifestyle you've been living that people have sought you out for for some time. What, what you should do is honor and lean into the credibility that you have built with your, with your business and, and with your reputation over the years. And actually plug that into the site. And so perhaps what you put here is a picture of you because these, these people know you, they know your face, they have for a long time. And you say, you know, finally, you can get everything that I know in one place. Get on the list.
So what I'm seeing isn't actually like, that's a pop up. But so mine, when I, if I could share my screen, like my screen, actually, my home screen does have my face. So what I see is not actually.
Got you. Okay. I see. So, so is this, so you might not have the actual like homepage URL set up. So right now, I just bypassed it. Let me try this again. Okay, so.
That's not it either.
Okay, no big deal. We can, so this is probably in one of your custom pages, right? So here, I'm actually, I'm going to unshare my screen so I can kind of discreetly get into and and see the pages in your account. If that's okay.
So if I go, if like what I'm looking at now is the, the page, it says jillianburger.com-page/home.
Okay.
I thought I had that set up to be like the front and center when people.
Oh, I see. Alright, so there's just going to be a couple of minor tweaks to be able to get to that. Let me go back to share. I have this up right now. Okay, perfect. So it's actually, it's quite simple. It's in the, it's in the menu. What is it like the menu settings? You can actually select to have this be the homepage for jillianburger.com. But this is great. Okay, excellent. Well, you do have your space and your face there next to it. I like it. Alright. Okay. That's, that's fantastic.
So where it says why go toxin free, how do I like how Amelia had, and others do this too, and I really like it. It's just like the rectangular part, the background of that header is a color. How do I create that?
Sure, I'll show you. Hold on just a second. I'm going to get into your account here and we'll actually edit that page. Alright, so this is, it's called home in your custom pages. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay, let me find it. There we go. Alright, I'm going to share again and I'll show you how they did that. Okay. So right here, there's this little, you see this little half circle? That's what we're going to go to. So right here, you have the option to put an image in there, which is what you saw for Amelia in Slaysha. So if you had like a nice sort of background landscape type image, just going to see if there's like something that you already have that fits that. But absent that, actually here, we'll try this. Okay, so and what they also did was they had a parallax background, which means that the background stayed static as you were scrolling through the text.
Oh, I love that. Okay, that's what that is.
Right? So that's what that is. So let's save and view this so you can see.
Okay, cool.
So that's what that is.
I'm done with my other question.
So all that is, is you can change the section background. And if you wanted it to be a color, you just click up here. And then you pick a color or depending on your device, if you hit show colors, if that shows up for you, I know I'm on a Mac and this is not the same for everybody.
I have a Mac, so.
Okay, so what I do is I hit show colors and the cool thing on a Mac is, is it pops up the same colors menu as it does for things like pages and keynote. And so you can actually use an eyedropper tool and grab whatever color you want from your screen to be able to pick a background color. Which is a really great shortcut. If you're on a Mac, I just don't know how it works for other computers. So if you're cool with us leaving it this way. That does kind of give it a little bit more, it gives it just a little bit more visual interest. What I would, what I would do here as well is, is maybe just add another quick little line of of copy here. So why go toxin free, then maybe, you know, add a statistic or a factoid or just something. You know, just a little something to indicate sort of what you're going to be delivering. Because, you know, they probably, if they're on your page, they probably know that there are, you know, any number of toxin free solutions out there. But what are you going to be talking about? Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Awesome. Okay, so let's go back over and look at your sites again. Oh, yeah. And while we're here, let's just go ahead and get this, get this figured out and make sure this is set up. And Greg, I may need you to help me make sure I'm doing this correctly. Site menu. I don't do this. Awesome. Alright, so home is a menu header. I, let's see, how do we do that?
You would have to add another menu item that is the website page and put it under home and then make that the main.
There we go.
Maybe I just screwed that up because I just, literally today, I just went through it and made the whole header horizontal. So I may have just screwed that up.
Okay, so the page is home and it's going to show up under home. And it is now the front page of your website. So let's save that and try going to your website again. There it is. Okay, now that's done. Yay. Okay. As a grown adult, one of the things I feel is incredibly important, I wasn't taught in school is how to take care of our body, but it's better than ever. Okay, um, what are you offering here?
Um, information on how to, I like how to truly be healthy.
Okay.
And so what that leads to is the, like the vault for non, my non-members.
Got you. Okay, okay. So it's going to put them in the vault where they're going to get information. So what, what I would, what I would do is think about just structurally what the information is that you're offering. So enter your information now and get free access to my five module course and community that'll show you, you know, how to adult. Show you how to adult healthfully in, you know, in 30 days or something like that. We want to just kind of shift. Does that make sense? Or do you see kind of the difference there?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, so what we're asking them to do is to get access to something that feels like it'll be a solution for them that they also don't feel like is going to be work. But we do have to have some clarity in it, right? Which is, you know, when you get this, you're going to get my seven this and my three that. You're going to get access to a guide and a group. As opposed to, you know, something that that sounds a little more vague. The more clear we can be in our copy, the more effective we can be in actually getting people to take action on it.
Okay.
Hey, hey, there's that parallax background. Awesome. Okay, how it all started.
Is there a way to have the pop ups only be on the side instead of big like that?
No, the pop ups are pretty standard in terms of like what they, what they do on the site right now. However, you can change how they're displayed. So when you go to your page. When you go to your page, you can go to your settings and then those lead capture settings right now. You've got it set to where, you know, a certain amount of time has passed or a certain percentage of the page is passed. So you do have a button or two on the page that also allows for the pop up. So I would maybe, you know, remove one of these or two of these if you don't want it to pop up.
Yeah. Um, the other question I had, okay, right there, I really liked how she had, Amelia had pictures. Instead of where it says join my free community, follow my blog, blah. So where would I put, so would I do like a background and then I put the, the picture? Or do I do that one template with the three pictures and then?
Yeah, so this is, it is a template with three pictures. So what you would do, and I believe it's this one. You would just swap out the, yeah, swap the images out. And then I actually prefer because, you know, your amount of copy is not going to be the same in all of them. And however much copy is up here impacts where the image sits. I actually like to delete this part. And then. Hit enter beneath the. hit enter beneath the image and then type here.
Then you had told her that she could put um an image over top of the picture? Would you just do that in Canva first?
Yeah, so what I was suggesting is um, so instead of having an image here and some text and a um or actually, I don't think she had text. I think it was just image and a and a button. In lieu of image and a button, I would make the image a little more like a button. So uh, you know, check out the blog, get my guide, that kind of thing.
And then they can click the image.
Correct, yes. Go ahead.
Oh, no, go ahead. I was, I figured you were gonna answer my question.
Well, I want I wanna answer as many of them as I can. But in in Canva or whatever you'd prefer to use, Canva does, definitely does make it very easy. You can overlay image on, overlay text on the image in Canva and then bring that over here. There are instances where you don't wanna do that on the page because you want, uh for instance, like if you are like, I wouldn't make this an image, right? The section of your page, uh, you know, the the search engines crawl through your website text and they're looking for things that are relevant so that they know what people, you know, how to point people to things that they're searching for on the internet. So this is the kind of thing that I would not put into an image. However, if this is just gonna be directing someone off to a blog, then you put blog across it and it doesn't hurt anything. It's a little cleaner, there's less going on there. And then what you do is if you wanna hyperlink it to the blog is you grab your blog link, click the image like this and then just insert the blog URL right here and then choose whether or not to open it in a new, in a new tab. And then this actually becomes a thing that they can click off to.
Okay.
Yeah.
Perfect.
Yeah, pretty, pretty simple. Did you use, is this the um, the template from Gopher Gold?
Yes.
Recognize this because I made it. So um, cool, yeah, this is uh, this is great. You've got your, your blog is here. Let's go check that out while we're here. Assets of the Plant Kingdom. Definitely uh definitely utilize uh images as much as possible. This is good. Yeah, it's just a couple of them.
Yeah, there's not a lot on there. Um, but I'm gonna go through and do what you said about using one of the templates and yeah, that's awesome. Cause I was like, that's so boring.
But you are doing, well, so here's the thing, right? Like you've, there, there are people who are used to following you and take you very seriously because they trust you and they know what you've invested in knowing yourself professionally, you know, like you've, you you have a serious background. So people are um are are bound to come and and take in what you're sharing, you're sharing a little differently than somebody who just had cool stuff they saw on social media, right? There's, there's sort of a different air of authority when someone is walking in the door. And there's nothing wrong with you leaning into that. And you've actually done an excellent job here with the way you have structured uh the texts and the copy. You've got like nice bold and underline. You don't have uh, you know, blocks of text that are too big. You know, this is definitely probably geared more toward a green personality, like somebody who is more analytical and wants the the research and the facts. And that's great. Like, the people who want this kind of material are gonna love this. And that's totally, totally fine. Yeah, highly recommend you use that hack that I showed you earlier today so that you can format it and make it pretty a little easier. But um, but yeah, you're you're doing a great job. What is this community wellness center?
Oh, that's a um, the wellness center. Yeah, so I I just put that on there because I haven't created the page. I was actually gonna create a page that says coming soon.
Okay.
But it was like I put it in there as I was doing the um rearranging everything. So it's a room that um, one of our team members, well, two of our team members have um rented space to do this really beautiful, like have an event center. So it's just um, I thought I'd put that up on the page so that people have a place to go check out what's happening. But then I was like, it is kind of like the upcoming events, but I thought I could put like pictures and I don't know.
Yeah, absolutely. So this, this is great. I'm glad that you have this here. Um, that's really exciting that you guys have the community stuff coming up. To to keep branding consistent, I would, uh, and I think that you can do this for free with Canva. But uh, but they're, I mean, their paid option isn't really terribly expensive either. Uh, if you use like a blog post template, then you've got the the opportunity to use any or any different kind of formatted images that you find and want to use. But then the resulting images are consistent. Right.
Yeah, yeah, and I have the um pro version. So it's just like a, it's just like a, when you go to hit create image, you just choose blog, picture, or whatever it's called.
Yeah.
Is that right?
Yeah, 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 that's, that's totally it. Um, so they they have a blog header option and then um, which is one that you could use for that, that landscape one that I showed you guys today. And then uh, there is the actual blog one, which there is this longer, um taller rather. But but yeah, it still shows up. But yeah, this is cool. So what what I would recommend, uh, since you are um, you're someone who, I mean, am I, am I right about that? You're green, are you a green personality? A little bit?
Yeah, a little bit nerdy. And I say that in a good way because I love, I love it all. But um, it's funny, when I took the the color test, I was like yellow and blue and zero red and like a little bit green. But I'm like, I love staples. My husband kids me all the time. I used to like own one or fast life. So I think I took the test wrong. But anyways, yes.
That's okay. These, it it really depends on where it comes from. But um, but you're, you're obviously, you're someone who 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 loves the details. Who um, who people probably already know and respect and want to learn the details from. So I would lean into that. So what what you might consider doing here is is maybe take a step back and uh consider how you might write about yourself on a website that advertises your professional services as a, as a massage therapist. Or how your work might look or what you want your work to look like with your clients. And then, you know, kind of translate that over to your site. Because we're kind of shifting over from expertise in therapy and in the body into uh a space where you're talking about expertise uh in whole life wellness. So um, so come over here, mention, you know, how many, how many years you've been at what you're doing, the kind of stuff people can expect to see on your site. And then, of course, you know, grab this guide so that you can get started on the journey and you can join our free community and get even more. Cause I I think you you've got a lot there. I think you, you might not be talking about the really obvious big positives that you have going on for you front and center, and you totally should be.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. And thank you for sharing.
Yes, thank you. That was awesome. I just happened to see that it was available. I was like, yes.
Yes, yeah, glad.
Do you see, do you see my logo at the top? That's from your branding.
It is. Look at that, you guys. That's really good. I like that a lot. Good job. All right. Well, look forward to seeing you in the branding intensive in January when we relaunch it. And uh, yeah, see you then. All right, take care.
Thank you. Thanks.
Okay, you guys, uh, let's get into some Q and A before we go. Thank you all for sticking around. Really great questions today. Greg, Suzanne has a question about removing a category from a blog section. And I'm not entirely sure what to do.
Uh, where is the question?
In the Q and A.
Just in general, okay. So to remove a question or remove a question, yeah. Remove a category. It it sort of works like the, currently it works like the tags in the contact manager. You have to remove all of the tags or categories from all of the posts and then the last one will remove it from the list. That is, and we've had some requests to make that a little bit easier since there is no bulk operations. But yeah, that's kind of how it's done.
Okay, okay, definitely. Um, so that's, it sounds like that might be a little bit more advanced of an operation. I mean, I don't have a demo account with a bunch of different tags set up. Is that, is that something you think we'd be able to demo?
Let me see here. I wonder if I have a demo account that actually has a few here. Let's, let's check out my uh extra zany John L. account and see what's in there.
That's our goofy account. All right, while you're looking that up, I will uh move on to another question here. Uh, and maybe ideally one that doesn't have that require me showing the screen while you're trying to figure that one out. Okay. Acusa asked, where did Julie get all those background images? So uh, what you saw me scrolling through on Jolene's site was her image library. Every time you upload an image to your site, uh, that actually shows up there. So instead of clicking to add a new image, you can actually hit the file image. Uh, so when you like hit swap, for instance, on an image in a template, you have the option to grab something that already exists and there's a file that's already uploaded from things you've already put onto your site. And then there is um a thing below where you can upload something from your device. So hers was something she had already used for something else entirely. And uh Canva is another great place where you can create background images for what it's worth. Okay, Tessa, off topic, but what font was used on the blog from the very beginning of today's call? Where we learned how to use reply templates for the blogs. The font for Jane, let me pull up her brand kit. I'm pretty sure, I'm pretty sure it's Railway, which is like our primary font. Um, and it was um for the header specifically, it's like all caps is what it does. So R A L E W A Y, Tessa. We use that for a lot of our stuff for Get Oiling. Let's see.
A post of the category so I can show, share that out here quick.
Please.
Okay. All right. So here is a test blog post that I've made. And it's in this category, tests. Uh, as you can see, there's a couple of different categories that we have here. We've got hello and we've got test. As the categories obviously probably have better names than that. But this one is, this one happens to be the last blog post that is uh with this test category. So I will um just delete this and then save. And then once it saves, you'll see that it eliminates test from the blog category list. You do have to walk them through it. You know, delete one at a time essentially. And you can get the list of posts if you go to your blog. And over here in the sidebar are the categories. You can click the category and then we'll actually give you a list of all the posts, which then you can edit, remove the tag and so on. So hopefully, you know, you don't have dozens and dozens of these because it would take a little bit of time. But if it's just a handful, this should be pretty straightforward to remove the tag.
There's also something that uh Greg, is the, is the copy feature like turned on?
It is. This morning.
So you guys, huge announcement. If you stuck around and you're paying attention, if you formatted a blog post and you love how it looks, you now have a copy button to copy that blog post and use that as a template for future blog posts. Thanks for sticking around. That's good news. Oh my gosh, that's amazing. Gotta love those sheet codes. Gotta love those sheet codes. Figure it out once, use it over and over again. How much better can it get than that? All right, since we're on blogs right now and you've got a screen up, uh Nancy's asking how to add a video to a blog post. The answer is yes, Nancy, you can and you should.
Yeah, so what I'm gonna do, uh, I just paused my share while I go grab a video, random video link here from YouTube. See if I can find one from our channel. I'll just grab the video link here. Okay, so now I got that up. So basically in YouTube, here's, here's a YouTube channel. Uh, I'm just gonna grab the link from one of these randomly. Click last week here, right click and copy the link address, or you can click on it and then grab the address out of the address bar. Once you have that, if you're inside the post, uh, yes, it's very scripty. So let me delete that. And then you just come over here to insert video and paste in that link that you had uh from YouTube. And then it shows up. And then from here, you can do some simple resizing. Uh, you can drag it, you know, change the every aspect ratio on a video might be a little bit different. So you find out what works best for you and and whatever you're looking to do there. Um, this works with YouTube and Vimeo and Wistia right now. If you have a different one, you can embed those by clicking on this little embed code link here under insert video. Normally, you know, for those three main ones, you can just paste in the URL. If you have the embed code for some other service, you can totally do that here too. You just have to provide the, or paste in the embed code they give you. I don't have an example of that offhand. But that's how you do other services.
Awesome. Yeah, nine times out of ten, you guys, you wanna be doing this on YouTube. Uh, because if you put the description uh, in the description box of YouTube, the URL, the link to this blog post, you're going to get more traffic to your blog posts, more people to your website, and ultimately more leads for your business. So put this on YouTube and send them back to your website if they find you on YouTube. Um, but anyway, okay. So uh, back on the blog post, Greg, can you show them how to hyperlink a bit of text for contact, for a contact form to pop up?
Yeah, totally. And I can even show the button because I think that came up a couple of times here. So I'm just gonna put a couple of lines in there. Uh, so I'll show you a link first, just a straight text link and then a button. Uh, so like what you read, contact me. I'll say something like that. So basically just by highlight the text that you've typed that you wanna link on, I'll say, contact me. Click insert link and all you have to do is type hashtag contact and insert. And then that will go up and and pop up that box. Uh, I'll demo that here quick and then I will come back and show you the button. So I'll view the post here. And there's the video. And here's the contact me, which pops up the box. So coming back here, if I want to, I'll make also a button. It doesn't matter how many of these you have on a page or on the post, but the buttons now, I believe, I think those are under this more rich scrolling in the right position here. So under this more rich plus sign, there is an insert button icon here. So you can click on that. Choose from the buttons that you have. This account has some interesting uh color choices. I'll insert this Aqua one here, which then you can click on it. It already has a link on it. So all you have to do is click on it and hit edit. Change the URL to hashtag contact, uh, change, you know, contact me or whatever you wanna say on there. Update. There you get a nice looking button um that you can have on your blog post. And I'll view the site here. Oops, not the site. View the post, wrong button. Uh, and here's the button that also pops up the contact me box. So, yeah.
And that's the only hashtag for blog posts, like the lead hashtag that you see on custom pages does not work here. It is just the contact uh tag.
Correct, yep.
All right, uh, Marcia asked, uh, what about people moving over to MeWe or Parler? It really, it doesn't matter. Uh, wherever you are, um, I mean, you could certainly put your links to those sites where you're showing up so that people can join you there. That's fine, just like you would point off to a Facebook group, for instance, uh, or to to so other social profiles. But what you really wanna be doing is taking people from whatever sites you're on, Facebook, LinkedIn, YouTube, MeWe, Parler, wherever, and bringing them to this site. You wanna be moving them from where they're hanging out to come check out your content. Okay, just a few more questions here. All right, Carrie says, not to do with blogging, is it possible to filter all my members, bring them up and make changes to one contact, but then go back to the group of members and make a change to another one without having to start the filter process all over again? So uh, if you need to make a change to a couple of contacts in a specific way, so let's just say, for instance, you want to remove tags from them, then you can perform that as a bulk action if there are multiple people who are tagged that you wanna remove tags from. But if you wanna make actual updates to their contact file, like changing individual information, you should look up that member, change the information that you wanna change for them, and then do whatever you need to do on, for the group as a whole, you know. So if there's contact information or name changes, you're really gonna wanna do that one contact at a time. Uh, because you can't really bulk change that. But there is a way, of course, uh, and we've got videos on how to do this. Definitely check out our help center on on how to bulk action uh for things like adding to vaults, removing from vaults, adding campaigns, removing campaigns, adding, removing tags, that kind of thing. All right, Marissa, is there a way to have a share button maybe for Pinterest for our readers to easily click and save from the blog? So like save, like to make a, an image pinable?
Yeah, actually, I wonder if I have some sort of plugin here, but this does say, the share button does have uh Facebook and Twitter and Pinterest, which apparently maybe that has changed off of, look at that. Normally it just says Pinterest, but yeah, there is a share button built in. Um, maybe this, yeah.
Would you maybe have to have your Pinterest like set up and attached to your account first?
Uh, I'm wondering if that isn't what's going on, because I know in this account, I've experimented around with like connecting it to a Pinterest account. So maybe it's like taking it over. It's normally just says Pinterest and it popped them, you know, over, it'll open it up to Pinterest still. But like with Facebook, for example, by clicking on all that opens in a new window, so you can't see it. But what it did, it was open a new window where it allowed me to share to Facebook with that given post. So same should be true here.
Okay. All right, uh Suzanne, to add a web link inside of a challenge chat room, or really had anything inside of a chat room, inside of a Get Oiling member area vault, you would simply add that to uh to a post and post it, right? The other way that you could do it, if it is a link that is regularly referenced, uh, say like for instance, a Zoom link. uh, say like for instance, a Zoom link or something like that, you would put it in the description, uh, for the class up there top where it says hello there. This is such a funny, funny demo account.
There's lots of good stuff in here.
All right. Jolene's asking, how would you choose a different color for the buttons other than what's available? Those were custom buttons, those wonky ones that you saw, uh, and those were actually created under my site settings. And Greg is going to show where you can find that.
Yep. So this is on the premium or higher plan as well as basic. There is an add-on if you want this, um, which includes features beyond the custom colors and fonts. But if you haven't enabled, uh, under my site settings, custom colors and fonts, uh, and if you are in basic and you want that, just reach out to our support and we'll help you out. But once you're on this page, uh, scroll down and you'll have the button selection down here. There's a bunch, you know, you can change your default, fonts and sort of general styles for the whole site, which is a nice way to customize things. But once you, if you want to change the button, um, click on the button, it'll pop up, uh, a whole bunch of different things you can do to change it. Picking different colors for the text and the, you know, the background and foreground and all that. You can choose whether it's round or square or slightly so. Put shadows on the buttons, change the bar, you know, the border, like I don't want a border on there. I just want a little bit cleaner. You can totally do that. So you can really customize the look, uh, of your buttons with this area. But anyway, that's where you do it.
Awesome. And Tamara had, and this is more like a page formatting question, uh, how to move a button? She says, when I added it, it pasted it to the left of the photo on the bottom. I need it centered and moved down. Uh, so what, I, I think that when you paste buttons or you, you add a button, uh, especially in the, uh, in the custom pages editor, it is typically going to align itself to the left and below, like at the bottom. So what I usually do, uh, is actually place the cursor to the left of the button itself. And then either hit enter if I want it to be lower, uh, or hit backspace if I want to move it up. And then make sure that you look at the, uh, the text alignment bar when you have your cursor to the left of that button. Cause you can actually move how it's centered and actually center it on the page or center it in a section that way. So kind of pretend like it's text and, uh, and just make sure that it's, uh, yeah, Greg's going to actually show you what I'm talking about. This is much smarter way to go here.
Yeah. If it, you know, for example, I think a lot of sections are, are by default aligned left. Uh, then you can, if I add an element here, this is the page editor. If I add a button in here, uh, it's going to go to the left. But then if you align it, uh, center, that's how it'll jump to the center. So a lot of times if something like an image or video or whatever is stuck to one side and you can't quite get it to work, uh, you can highlight sort of everything around it, like the line above and the line down. And then try your alignment left, right? You know, if you want to do right or whatever, you can try that here. Cause what that does is then it aligns the, the section around it. Which then sometimes will center content that otherwise is being stubborn for some reason. So that's my little hack for it.
Awesome. Yeah. And, and just so you guys know, it's right up there. Greg, if you want to zoom in, it's that, it's the bar right up there. You see where it has like the left and the, and the, and the center alignments? That's really, that's all you gotta do right there. And, uh, and if you put your cursor to the left of it, that's the best way to go. And for editing the text on it, it took me forever to figure out that if you just put your cursor in the middle of the text, it will give you a box uh, on the button. Sorry, on the button, the cursor on the button. There you go. The little click the pencil. It's your friend. I used to do this whole weird thing where I'd like try to text, type text in the middle of the letters and like do this weird thing just to, uh, to change the button text. So that is it. Awesome. You guys, this is so exciting. I learned new things today. I hope you did too. And I'm excited to see you guys get out there and write some more blog posts. Get this thing done. Sign up for a website review. If you'd like help with your Get Oiling website, that's getoiling.com/websitereview. I look forward to seeing more of your amazing sites. Thank you to everybody who joined us today. To Amelia, Slasha, and as well to Jolene. Thank you guys. And hi team. Also bye team. Thank you guys for being here this week. I think there's one more question. Oh, uh, be on the lookout. We may have something to chat about next week. If you want to know more about the personal branding intensive and how you can get access to it, watch your email. Cause that is coming up again. That cat got out of the bag. All right.
Only for those that stuck around to the end.
Only for those. Yes. See, man, you stick around, you get the reward. All right, you guys. Thank you for being here and we look forward to seeing you same time next week.
See you.
Bye.